We talk about our Father, we give thanks for resurrection weekend. Just to be aware that life is good and we're not mad. Blessed now that the family of little Manny and Sister Power will feel the presence of your Holy Spirit and give them a lift out of their burdens and help them to understand that all is well. Give strength to them and encourage their hearts and let them feel your divine presence, that they may feel the joy of life. Bless each one of us and as we partake in this meeting to make decisions for our county, may we do the things pleasing in thy sight and as good for the citizens we serve through Jesus Christ our Lord and we do pray.
You received the minutes of the previous meeting, so turn the pages. Have been on this couple of weeks.
You're alright, you're alright.
At this time, a public hearing is called for all of the received citizens, comments, and questions that are treated, proposed amendments to section nine, that's true, that's one table of immediate uses of all of the nine zoning of the United Development Board of today's public county. The public here is called for all to speak with the public notice.
Yes, sir. Public notice, if you'd like to get in a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Tuesday, April third, seven p.m. in the County Committee for Green Second Floor, County Administration Building, two oh one St. Andrew Street, Fort Worth, North Carolina. The main section nine dash three dash one table of immediate uses of all of the nine zoning of the United, of the unified development of Edgecombe County. The proposed amendment will allow saving green in the area of thirty zoning districts. Copies of the proposed amendment are available for all participation during business hour, heading in the top ten in the county planning officer in two oh five County Administration Building, two oh one St. Andrew Street, Fort Worth, North Carolina. All parties and all interested residents are provided in order to be present in the county due time, this the twenty first day of March two thousand and eighteen, by order of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, and you want to go up to the floor.
I just want to know that there is, Heading Zoo has been in operation for some time here in county, in order for it to be compliant, we did not have anything in our zoning ordinance to address such an operation. And so, the amended language that has been proposed to you is put together, has been reviewed by the Planning Board of favorable recommend that.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, let's call public comments. If there's anybody who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. If there's anybody who has to speak. Here are none. The act consideration approval of amendments allows Heading Zoo in the area of thirty zoning districts. If the plan was to approve it, if they had motioned, if there's questions, all in favor, let me know by the vote, sign aye, all opposed, here are none, this approved. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, our request is to recess our regular Board of Commissioner and convene as Board of Equalization and Review, if they have motioned. All in favor, let me know by the vote, sign aye, all opposed. What we're doing now, ladies and gentlemen, we, this board also has the board of equalization review, and that motion made upset at that board, what we've been doing now is, is, we're about that fifth airboat port, we will be receiving an oath, so that we can say it's that board. Madam President, would you please come forward?
Good evening, we have Mr. Chair, and we have Patricia. If you, uh, stand please for the oath. If you're swearing on the vowel, if you would take your left hand and place it on the vowel and raise your right hand, if you're affirming, if you would just raise your right hand. Each of you to solemnly swear or affirm that you would support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Edgecombe County, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendship or obligation, so help you God. Thank you so kind. If you would sign each oath, I'd make sure I take it back to the office and have a wish.
This actually just in time, if you want to give a message. This is how it's like, why you say we might need to take this off, because we want to do it. Please say it, she's going to give you the oath.
If you place your left hand on the vowel, or raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you would support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Edgecombe County, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal, political, friendship, or obligation, so help you God. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I'd like to call, uh, for the relation review to order. The action requested is consideration of other, of decisions that may be a motion. Second, question, all in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. At this time, is there any activity taken by the board?
Just question, you anticipate the closing of the Board of Equalization and Review, Review and May meeting, is that right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Would that be correct?
Yes, sir.
So anything coming in between now and that we would do that, that meeting, that's correct?
Not sure if we'll hear it at that time, because we may receive it on that day, and then we'd have to have time to review it and make a recommendation, but we would not be accepting any more appeals after that adjournment date. But you could reconvene and hear those appeals and make a, take action on it.
Anything to come in between now and then?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for action? In my, the demo should reach access board for legalization and review until May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and reconvene as regular Board of Commissioners do. Second, questions, all in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, here are none. We are now, again, ladies and gentlemen, sitting as the Board of Commissioners. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, public petitions, if there's anybody who'd like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. If there's anybody to come forward. Good afternoon.
I'd say good afternoon to y'all, thank y'all for, excuse me, allowing me to come through y'all's end. I give, most time I come, I like to bring some history with me, so what I can give y'all there is a piece of history. And for y'all that recognize the picture, there's the current house that Commissioner Wooken lives in. But he converted that house, so that goes to show you, people can be converted just like houses. I mean, my mother lived in a house when she was three, I'm telling you, she was twenty-four years of age, and she's nine to four, she's asleep today. So that goes to show you, he moved that house in ninety, and he converted it to that final picture that you see there right now. So again, if you can do the same thing, give an opportunity, that's why I'm glad to know y'all have embraced the reentry program from that example. Also like to probably thank Mr. Tozen for what he did with the gravel company. I know a lot of people a little bit disappointed, but you go fishing, you lose, when you paint shop fishing, you have to continue, so we thank Mr. Tozen for what he continued to do. And congratulate him, Mr. Tough, for the long leaf pine, I guess, but it's very, I'd just like to ask the county commissioner, years ago, they had what they called a organization chart. That organization chart was a snap picture, where you could look at any, you could look at the county overall, you do get an instant picture of the diversity of the county in each department. I'd like to see that put back on the table, just see where Edgecombe County is when it comes down to our aspects of diversity. Again, that's, that, that organization chart would be a snap picture of that. Also with the recent health ranking that we got in Edgecombe County, and schools not going any better, I just think that you all the county commissioners need to challenge these boards that sits over these agencies, two or five under them, to see can they do a little bit more to bring awareness, because you can't continue to create a crisis situation like it's not a crisis. And in nineteen ninety-three, the Calaw Foundation did a study of Edgecombe County, they did results down in Arterium, and it showed then that Edgecombe County looked like a third world country in a lot of those areas that, that reports there were killing. And they went on to say, other friend with the director, they say if the, what was being produced, even in the school system, if they were caused, they would be doing recalls on them. But I don't think nobody read it, heard it, but we need to do better, we need to be challenged to do that. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you for coming.
I actually live in Nash County, I'm seven one seven five hundred Ridge Road, in Rocky Mount. I'm here on behalf of Twin Counties Disaster Recovery Group. I'm just, I was supposed to be here last month and was sick, so I wasn't able to come. I just wanted to give you a very brief update on how we are and to ask support in a couple of areas. So to date, we do help assist survivors of Hurricane Matthew with unmet needs. So if they're not able to assist us from FEMA or other organizations, we will help. Primarily, we've been helping with furniture and appliances as people transition back into their homes. So to date, we've helped eighty-five households to transition back into their homes during the month of February alone, we assisted twenty-eight families with a little bit over forty thousand dollars in funds, we asked for that. A hundred and thirty-two mattresses have been distributed, twenty-two heaters to families who are back at homes without heaters. We operate under the United Way, so they're our fiscal agent, but we are at a point now where we do need the support of the commissioners of the county to help us further work about the additional needs in Edgecombe related to Hurricane Matthew. April tenth is the deadline for the survivors to move out of the manufactured housing units with FEMA. We still have families that are attempting to transition. We've run out of resources and are anxiously applying grants and different things, since we're all grant funded, to do the work that we do and foundations and different things. So we also need the participation of business leaders, of churches, to help us to support families. And if anyone is interested in learning more about that, I do have some flyers here, I'll leave up front. Our number is two five two eight eight three sixty eight nine, and our email is twincountiesdrg@gmail.com. If you'd like me to come back at another time and share more information, I can do that.
Please state your name again.
Sure, Kimberly Vickerson.
And you were formerly with?
East Point.
So we all familiar with her.
Yeah.
Ms. Evans, in terms of the working committee with what she's on?
Oh, absolutely, and we're very pleased that she moved into this role, has been very helpful to us. She works very closely with our case managers and other staff at, uh...
I guess that's, can you satisfy as well?
Yes, sir.
Then in terms of how you try to, the funding agency, your funding agency, who?
We are, United Way is our fiscal agent.
Fiscal agent, they manage the money?
They manage the money.
Okay.
They do, so that's, if anyone wants to donate, they can certainly donate and designate for Hurricane Matthew survivors, and the money goes directly, right, every dollar that we're getting. There was some, I'm contract employee, I'm the only employee of organization, everyone else is volunteer, but the monies that are coming in now, and the monies that we, we've spent over a hundred thousand dollars in this area, are scoring right back out. As soon as we can get them in, we're getting them right back out. We contract, we're not contract, but we work with Tarver Clinic Center, and we do go there, take families there, allow them to choose from a selection, we only have a central family, I have a family, household furniture, but allow people to get, you know, refurnishings and appliances, to help them transition back into their homes.
Well, I don't know what we can and cannot do, but I'm quite sure if there's something, you know, in terms of if there's something that we can do, it's a work that appears to what I said, good way.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I live in Rocky Mount, so I work out of my home, I'm contract, but I'm over here in Edgecombe County most of the time. We meet with the county case manager and the state case managers twice a month to review cases and see how we can assist, and so...
Wherever you need to be.
I'm wherever I need to be, sometimes I'm over at the main building where everybody else is.
So we won't get it up on where you are, whether it's...
Just call me, just call me.
The service that you provide, okay?
Absolutely, thank you.
So you provide assistance at local counties?
We do, but right now primarily, all of the referrals we get are from Edgecombe County, and most of those are from Princeville.
And the, and the main thing is that we're working with the flood recovery victims to get them back, okay?
Yes.
To try to make them whole.
Yeah, and we will be here for the duration, so we know that it's not a short-term effort, it is a long-term recovery group.
And it sounds like something that we need to support. Is there anybody else to speak, that public petition? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address.
Greetings, commissioners, and Edgecombe County family. I am Dr. Doctor Alanubia. I represent KRT, the County Heating and Air Condition. We're fortunate enough to serve the residents here in Edgecombe County. One of our goals is to create some jobs. What's unique about our company is that we are the only African-American company in the state of North Carolina that received the state's highest award to be a certified apprenticeship employee for heating and air conditioning. We received that accommodation by Mr. Sherry Earl in two thousand and two. So we're interested in workforce development opportunities, because I believe it's important to rebuild the city. When I was younger, I'm a Princeville master, pass master, we used to come through this area, and they used to have a march or, I think, a parade years ago. So I just want to introduce myself to the group and solicit your support on anything we can do as a, as a, as a future employer, because it's one thing to build buildings, it's another thing to invest in people in terms of spreading the skill set. I'm not the type of person who makes excuses. I've been entrepreneurial for over ten years, I've represented Booze Allen, Accenture, travel all around the world, and one thing my father always told me, he said, if you take the sharpest tools out of your community and send them to another community to serve, what's the likelihood that they're gonna come home? Well, I'm home, and we would like to create some job opportunities. We've created some relationships here locally, and we would like to be able to take the skills that we have. Once, one thing that's unique, we bond at a million dollars. One thing that's unique about being a commercial heating and air conditioner versus being an residential heating and air conditioning, is that commercial heating and air conditioning requires two thousand hours of commercial only. In the North Carolina Hub database, there are only three African-American firms in North Carolina who have that credential. Two of them in Charlotte, and we're in Raleigh. So we're not about making a bunch of excuses, we're about doing good quality work. We are veteran-backed company, most of the people on our board are veterans. My son is Marine, went Iraq twice, went to Afghanistan once, so hats off to all of our military members here in the community. I just wanted opportunity to introduce myself. I extended a couple of olive branches in the community, requesting information such as Section Three Hub, and I actually recommended a small business development task force. I've been fortunate enough to have North Carolina N T State University as a client of mine. I've been fortunate enough to have St. Augustine's College as a client of mine. I've been fortunate enough to have Dr. Scott at Wake Tech write a letter of recommendation for me. I've been fortunate enough to have Dr. Julius Mallett, who used to be the head of the Brody School of Telemedicine, to write a letter. And I'm a, I went to NC State and I went to Shaw locally before going overseas to do post-grad work. So my goal is to create relationships and create opportunities. There are opportunities where small businesses can receive resources if their commitment is to create jobs in the, in the area. We would like to create jobs and we need your help. In order for us to create jobs, we have to secure contractual opportunities. So I was in a meeting, the first hurricane meeting, my grandmother, I'm sorry, my aunt was affected in two thousand, the first one you had, yesterday, go, ninety-nine. She lives right behind the Tar River, her whole house was like not even underwater. So this is a personal, of course, she lives a little bit close to Rocky Mount. And I remember that Representative Larry Hall, and we met, met life in Raleigh, and he met with all of the veterans who were involved in Hurricane Matthew Africa. One of the things Representative Hall, now Secretary Hall, recommended for us to do, he said, do your due diligence. He said, learn from the case studies of the past. He suggested to us in the areas that we wanted to work in, to go in, to request the budgets and look how the contracts and the money was spent twenty years ago. Then he said, do a gap analysis and compare what the trends were twenty years ago and compare them to what they are now, and look at the lessons learned. So honorable Councilman Wiggins and family, our goals is to come here, work as a team, offer solutions. I have four grandchildren, six children. I'm a trustee at First Baptist Church downtown Raleigh. Mr. Felton, my pastor, Dr. Dumare A. Harshaw, at First Baptist Church, also received the honor of the long leaf pine. I've been an honorable trustee of his for over fifteen years. I'm here because I have family here, we would like to locate a business here, and I know that it's important for the tire plant or glass company to come in, but if you look at the base of the pyramid, the vast majority of jobs created in America are one to five employees. So as much as we wanna, and I've done implant studies and I've done tax credit projects, I've probably secured more than fifty million dollars of development funded. In Raleigh, I did a project that was a hundred and forty-five thousand square feet, so, you know, not here to make excuses. My father used to always tell me, no, leave here at this point, and I say it to my children, I have four sons, two daughters, my oldest son is engineer, my second son is an architect, I have three children in college, and my baby boy can't make up his mind whether he wants to go into the Navy or the Air Force, so we give him a little time in the season, because he just went to work. Air Force, well, I love the Air Force. My granddaddy went in the Air Force, he was the Army Air Corps, and when he came out, it was the United States Air Force.
I'm just sorry you don't do residential work.
We do residential work.
The medicine?
I apologize. I, I didn't know, and you never met me so much, but I was old and you'll be getting the first time. So my, my father used to always tell me, he said, when you come to the table, son, if you have a challenge, he said, come to the table with solutions. He said, because if a man or woman faces you, and you bring solutions to the table, you'll be better received. So I didn't come to this county to bring any problems, my goal is to say, how can we be an asset and how can we accomplish many of solutions, so I yield my time, thank you very much.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer him to Ms. Evans, in terms of, if there's anything that, that we can do to assist, we usually work through our management teams and our partnership, uh, we certainly would have to look at anything that we can do, we have anybody located in our county, uh, but we always recommend that they come through our partnership organization and our management.
We'll do.
We certainly, if there's any areas that we can assist, we'll, we'll, this will occur.
Thank you very much, sir. Y'all have a blessed day.
Most answers, third, P O Box thirteen nine one, County Council, Carolina. Phil for Edwards, one two seven, Midway Lane, Tarver, North Carolina. I just want to echo, uh, what Mr. Kim, Kim, he just, um, talked about the long-term flood recovery. If y'all, just give a look at history, that group used to be down at, um, 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 Michael's Angels. I used to be a part of that group, they started out in Rocky Mount. I used to get out, work, go to meetings, and I asked the group to meet with some Harvard coaches for the, 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 area, they have a pretty fair approach, I think it was Wilkes, uh, you know, Halifax County, a lot of counties that was included. But I just want to echo, you all should be familiar with, because they met out of Michael Angel, they did some great work, so I'm proud to see where it is now, Ms. Kim, uh, Vickerson, was there at the time. I, I quit for one, because I, when I got to Cheneo Daniel, um, involved, so I would have to get off work, uh, doing the time, but this, this group has done some wonderful work, uh, I'm a part, let's see, uh, flood recovery, uh, seen what they have done, um, they also, uh, get some, uh, help out people in times of, with flood recovery. So whatever y'all can do, please do it, because they have done some, some great work.
The resolution reads, whereas it is our design to recognize accomplishments and service of individuals with light and work in fact as county and its citizen, and whereas David Shawn managed goodly serve as an Edgecombe County deputy, and whereas on March eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, Captain Mann was killed by courageous children of duty, as they long prospered off, and whereas Captain Mann sacrificed as far as to spare for the Edgecombe church office, the faith will perform their duty, and we just want to take action to recognize his service. Now therefore, be resolved by the governing board of Edgecombe County, that March eleventh, in the path of David Shawn's mandate, and be further resolved to honor his service, Captain Mann, all members, and my eighty-third now, the official retired from the Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office, on this third day of April two thousand and eighteen. Is there motion to approve this? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, here are none. This motion will be put into the county records. Families, families, sheriffs, please come forward. At this time, take a recess, all of this, that's a big recess. Is there, is there anybody in the county that'd like to make a comment? Would you kind of like to make a comment? This man would do that?
For those that don't know, I am DeShina Manning, um...
Without a recess, back in session, so that's okay.
Um, again, as I was saying, for those that don't know, I am DeShina Manning, Deputy David Shawn's Manning's mother, um, grandmother, fiance, daughter, grandfather, and on behalf of the Manning family... And on behalf of the Manning family, we thank you so much for this honor and recognition of my son. Um, we appreciate your continued support and dedication to our family, and thank you for all your prayers over my difficult time.
And the, the support that we've seen throughout this county, and that I'm sure, okay, we can kind of assure you that that was what we continue.
Yes.
Excuse me, let me get the twenty minutes. On behalf, on behalf of the board, I would just like to present this to you, and I do have copies if you'd like it, okay? Like to present this to the family.
Real quick, guys, uh, first of all, officials, thank you guys for your continued support of the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office. Thank you for the blessings you guys have shown us and the Edgecombe County, uh, community. Um, let's continue to pray for the Manning family, let's continue to pray for healing, uh, for the Drake family, let's continue to pray for healing for the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office staff. Uh, so many blessings were poured out to us from all over the world, uh, we just want to make sure the family receive them. Uh, we got a flag from a gentleman out of Utah that made it specifically for the family to praise Deputy DeSean, Deputy David LeSean Manning, Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office, all give some, and some give, uh, we want to present that to the family, okay? Y'all, so like to say, we, we had an artist, uh, I forget what state, Philadelphia, an artist that sent us, uh, eight copies, he, he did self-portraits of Deputy, uh, Manning. Uh, we want to present one to the fiance, one to, uh, the mom, and one to the grandparents. And I think he also sent seven copies that are rolled up that we give to the family, that we give out to whoever of that choice, okay? So if you got to present one to the mom, one to the fiance, and one to the grandmom and grandparents, it'd be great, and we'll take a picture and we'll get out of you guys with it, okay?